All right. Good evening, and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission meeting. We're a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. This evening's agenda does not include any public hearings. Amanda, would you please take the role?
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Ms. Heron?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Tobobin?
Here.
Mr. Nagar?
Here.
Mr. Cow?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
I've got seven present. We have enough for a quorum.
Thank you. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes of August 21, 2023. I'd be entertaining a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cal?
I'd move approval as submitted by staff.
Thank you.
I second that.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? If not, would you please take the vote?
Mr. Warner?
Abstaining.
Mr. Tobobin?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nagar?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Minutes passed. A six with one abstaining.
Thank you. Next, declaration of conflict of interest ex parte communications by members of the commission or staff. Probably don't have any this week since we don't have any cases, so. If none, we'll move on to action items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Under approval of minutes B, we had a second thing to do there.
Could you do that at this time?
Happy to do that. Commissioners, Matt Werner is done with us.
That's a great way to put it.
Matt's been on the Planning Commission since 2017, which is pretty crazy. So that's two terms total that he's been with us and cannot get reappointed, unfortunately. Just a personal note, I've worked with Matt in Lawrence and here in Topeka, and I've always thought he's been really great to work with. There's a couple different projects. And I think Matt's been really great for the Planning Commission as well. I think he's provided a nice balanced perspective, and I think we're going to miss him. I think he's really been doing a great job for us. So if others have some thoughts they'd like to add, that would be great. In the meantime, we'll present Matt with this nice certificate, and Amanda wants to make sure that you hang it up somewhere prominent.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anything to say, Matt?
It went by really fast, I can tell you that. Six years. I was thinking about it the other day. It seems like I've been doing it for about a year. And four of those were, well, about three and a half of them were here, and the other half was across the highway, and the other two were at my desk. Virtual, so it was interesting. I think that's probably why it went fast, because two of them were virtual. But I just want to thank staff. Without staff, I mean, you guys make this thing go so smooth for us. It helps in our decision making, and that's the main thing, and I appreciate it, and thank you all, fellow commissioners.
Awesome.
Good call.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, two action items. First up is the Planning Commission bylaws.
You should all have three drafts in front of you. They encompass the comments that you made last month concerning general public comment, so we can discuss the drafts, and we can discuss any amendments that you might want to make to any of the drafts. So I'll open it up to you all.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cal?
Could I ask, Mary, before we, I guess the big topic is the before or after public comment, or if there is going to be, if there will be general public comment. Before we get into that, could I ask you about two other items that are unrelated to that? But they're still relevant. They're unrelated to that. Mary, on, just a clarification, on Article Five, Conduct of Meetings, Section One, parliamentary authority.
Which draft are you looking?
I think this isn't all of them.
Okay.
In Article Five, Section One.
Oh, yes, okay.
Line 129?
Yes.
The last sentence in that, Section One, says, "The chairperson shall decide all points of order with guidance from legal counsel." And I just want a clarification, make sure I'm reading it correctly. That would be, I mean, the chair makes the decision, and the commission can't override that, or?
Correct.
The chair has the last word?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And the other thing, Mary, is something we talked about a little bit before the meeting started. It's over in, and again, this isn't all the drafts, Section Three of Article Five, Public Comment. And it's that paragraph below, paragraph B, of the struck language.
Right.
This is on the deleted language. It starts off, it's double I, "Notwithstanding Section 3B, public comment will not be entertained on remands." And then it details what, which remands. And that would be new language in your original draft that you submitted. That was going to be new language that you proposed, but now you're proposing it, suggesting it be deleted.
Based on the conversation we had last month, I just pulled it out. However, you can put it back in if you like. If you want to entertain comment when something is remanded to you, we can certainly restore that language.
Yeah. And I'm obviously just, my thought on it is that, and we can go back to the gas company on Gage, and also the?
Rochester Road.
Rochester Road, yeah, Eugene.
Multi-family housing, yes.
Where the city council remanded matters back to us. My view is that, you know, a remand is for asking us to reconsider the matter that was before us at the previous meeting, when we took action. And it should be limited to the information that we had at that time. It's a reconsideration of our consideration, and to introduce new, to allow new testimony to come in. I'm not sure that there could be, there could be an endless loop there going on. We have new information on the remand comes in, and so a decision is made that changes, goes back to the city council, and the city council would look at our analysis and our decision and realize there's new information here, which they may or may not find acceptable or have questions about that new information, so it comes back to us. And I don't think there's anything that prevents a second remand. It's not prohibited by statute. But, so this, putting this language in and not taking new testimony on the remand brings closure to us. We're done with the deal at that point.
Yes, that's true. And of course, all of the items that are remanded back to you have already been subject to a public hearing. So, yes.
And when you've had these last two experiences with matters on remand, the chair, I think properly so, said that we would not entertain any new testimony. And I don't think that precludes us from hearing from applicant, you know, to ask questions of the applicant if we choose to.
Sure, especially depending upon what the city council sent back to you. It might require some kind of input from the applicant. So, yes, that, yeah, that would be allowed.
And I'm thinking of the project on duplexes. I keep forgetting the name, but I think Mike presented a lot of new analysis or response that was relevant to the specific issues that the city council raised. There are three, four, or five matters that city council wanted more input on, and the staff provided their information on those points, and we debated and discussed it and made our decision. So, so, Mr. Chairman, that's, for what it's worth, that's not a deal breaker for me, whether it's in or not, but I think it makes our life a little easier, and it also tells the public and the applicant, you know, what the rules are.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect, to restore that language?
Well, I, I guess no, I guess no, there's any strong objection to?
To restoring that language?
For keeping it out, I guess, or putting it out.
Okay.
I would agree with you on that. I don't think giving another public comment would have changed anything on those last two we talked about. It would have been another long night, and it might have been frustrating for the public, too, to rehearse it all again.
Well, if you want to handle this, have motions on different changes to this before we take a vote on the full set of bylaws. If that's your preference, then I would offer a motion to put that struck language back, put it into the bylaws. It's not in the bylaws now. It was initially proposed to be in the bylaws, and I would, I would like to go with what Mary initially proposed, in that paragraph.
Would that just be line 152 through 155?
Correct, correct.
And not 148 through 150?
Correct.
Do you need that first section for any reason?
Yeah, correct. The lines 152 to 154 in Draft Two would be restored.
And here, I think that if that passes, I think the numbering on that, I think the paragraph needs to be renumbered.
Yes, it will be.
So we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Nagar?
I do like the idea of, like, if we don't have that language, it is clear for the city council. I also like the idea of people are not coming here wondering, will we get to have comment or not? It's very clear, so, yeah. In both cases, I like that it's more clear, and you know, whatever role you're playing, you know what to expect, so.
Mary, can the city council require us to take public comment when they remanded it back as part of their motion?
I, you know, I really, I don't know. I think they could certainly make that request of you, and, but then you'd have to decide whether you wanted to do as you have been requested.
All right. Okay.
I don't, I don't, well, I don't think that they would do something like that, but...
Okay. Any other comments on the motion?
Mr. Chairman? Was the motion to just add that to Draft Two? Would it also go into Draft Three?
Yes, whatever draft they select, that language will appear.
Gotcha.
They'll have to decide whether they want public comment before or after the meeting. So, but the language we just talked about will be included in whatever draft they decide.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a recent clarification on something?
Yeah.
If I could. This is really for Mary, I would think, and perhaps Commissioner Cow. So if we're bringing, if we're introducing new information, whether it's requested by, specifically requested by the governing body on a remanded item, the staff is providing new information. Is there a concern that if the public does not get an opportunity to comment on that, is that any concern with how, you know, due process? I mean, is that?
No.
Okay. And the reason I ask is with the Eugene Paramore case, there was some new information, information that was not presented previously. Not just to, for example, there was a comment made in the previous proceedings that there were no road plans known about Rochester Road, and we found after the public hearing that there were plans by the county, and that was introduced at the later meeting.
No, there are no due process issues.
Okay.
Relative to not allowing comment on new information.
Okay. Any other comments on the motion? Not, would you take the vote, please, Amanda?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Nagar?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tobobin?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
And that motion passes, six zero.
The next issue is whether you all want to entertain public comment before or after the regular business. And I don't know whether staff has a recommendation.
I think staff's preference would be to do, to run the meeting similar to the governing body with the comment after the action items.
Maybe to add a little color to that, too. I think part of the concern is that if we, if we hold public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then we have specific items that people have signed up to speak to, that they may be covered twice, or we'll be tripping over ourselves several times to try to keep the process flowing smoothly.
Thank you. Mr. Nagar?
Yeah, I think I was the one who first brought up doing public comment before, the idea getting people out on their way if they just wanted to do public comment and go. I think the concerns of people getting confused which public comment is which people using both times to say roughly the same thing, and the ability to do it in writing particularly, that you could submit public comment, general public comment in writing, and so you don't necessarily have to come here on a specific night and spend an unknown amount of time. Between all that, I think I'm comfortable with the after, doing public comment after the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the Topeka Speaks, which I need to be more attuned to than I have been. My recollection is that it is soliciting comments relating to specific agenda items, right? And there's not an entry there for general comments or non-agenda items?
That's correct, yeah. I would say that it would be possible probably for us to create an item that is public comment, and then that would allow people to comment underneath it through the website.
So we could, I mean, people could either show up if we adopt bylaws that allow for that, that people can show up, they can write something, or a letter, or whatever, they can go up to Topeka Speaks, so.
I think if you think about the, a lot of times the public who come have never been here before, so this is their only meeting. And I think I like it after the fact, just because it's more clear, whatever they came for, if it was an agenda item, that's obvious, and they can go home. But I think it was before, they might, someone might get confused about, well, do I do it now or not, you know? So I think it's more clear for the public who don't regularly come to meetings like this to know what's going on if we do it after the fact, so. That's kind of my thinking. Something else on the, let's see, I noticed on here, "Members of the public design comment during meeting must notify the planning department by 5:00 PM on the day of such meeting." I wonder if that should be just before the meeting, like, at least the day before? You're saying that they have to comment on it that day? They couldn't do it the day before? They couldn't request? Is that, is that something we would want to have that way?
Well, they just, if they want to comment at a meeting, they just have to sign up and let people know. So by the time the meeting is held, you have a list of all the people who are going to speak.
I see the "by" now. I missed that when I was going through this. "By 5:00 PM on the day of such meeting." So they could do it the day before, two days before?
Sure, yes, yeah.
Okay. I missed the word "by." Any other comments about the general comment period? Before or after?
I prefer after as well.
Okay. We'd be open to, I guess we need a motion to adopt the?
Motion to adopt Draft Three, which is general public comment after the meeting.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's just a motion on that point, the before versus after?
Correct.
Is it on the full set of bylaws?
Correct. It's just after the meeting. Right, Draft Three. You would move to approve Draft Three as amended by the previous motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Not, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Nagar?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tobobin?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion passes, six zero.
Mr. Chairman, I know that his before and after has taken up most of the consideration, most of the adoption, but I wanted to make the comment that Mary made a lot of changes, was proposing a lot of changes, and it's a pretty significant improvement over what we've got on the books right now, so, thank you, Mary.
Well, it's been 15 years, so it was time for a change.
Is there anything else that we need to review or go over?
No, unless anyone else has any other changes that they would like to make. Okay, I will make those changes, and that's the end of this item.
Awesome, thank you. Next item is discussion items. Presentation and discussion, an update to the Holiday Park Plan.
Mr. Isley? I may be misunderstood, the last motion and vote was just on the before and after, not on the full set of bylaws.
I think it was the?
Draft Three as amended, including your previous motion.
Okay, sorry.
Draft Three plus the restoration of that language is the subject.
Okay, well, my vote is still yes.
Mr. Isley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. As stated, this is going to be a presentation on the update to the Historic Holiday Park Neighborhood Plan. This is for Dreams One, so we'll get into that right now. So what is Dreams One? Dreams One is, was previously known as SORT or Stages of Resource Targeting. So a lot of the timeline, a lot of the things will be the same, but we will cover some of that. So in fall of 2022, the Historic Holiday Park NIA applied for and was awarded Dreams One. With Dreams One comes $1.7 million in infrastructure funds, and then $330,000 for housing rehabilitation. So that's what you're seeing up there. In general, the timeline for this is 2023, we're working on the neighborhood plan. 2024, it'll be kind of handed over to the engineers, they'll work on designing all of the infrastructure projects, and then 2025, we'll be looking at implementation with the end goal being by the end of 2025, these projects will be complete. So this is the general process for the Neighborhood Plan timeline. Following the neighborhood selection in fall of 2022, we go out and begin inventorying the neighborhood for a set of different conditions, so housing, infrastructure, owner occupancy, crime, we'll touch on those later. We kicked off a neighborhood meeting on March 8th. We had roughly 30 members of the public attend that meeting, and since then, we have held about seven or eight meetings with the neighborhood with a Dreams Planning Committee. So we typically have about eight to 10 members of that community at these meetings. We cover a variety of topics, which we'll touch on later. So we've covered the spring to summer. We have not had our final meeting yet. We're still working on some of the details, but we'll have a final neighborhood meeting where we were at, we will ask the public to vote on adopting that plan from their perspective, see if they have any issues. We also have one meeting we need to have with the neighborhood as well for infrastructure project selection. Then the goal is to come back October, November, Planning Commission for action, and then whatever we need to follow that up with for city council, so this timeline stays on track. The general planning area for Historic Holiday Park is 10th Avenue to the north, Southwest Clay to the west, Southwest 13th to the south, and Topeka Boulevard to the east. As you can see, this neighborhood has downtown Topeka to its east, historic Old Town to the north, Tennessee Town to the west, and Central Park to the south. So what we have here are the elements of a neighborhood plan. These are all being updated. The original Historic Holiday Park Neighborhood Plan was completed in 2008. So a lot of this is going and reviewing the existing plan, seeing what needs to be updated, a lot of those existing conditions in the neighborhood profile. So demographic trends are going to be updated. We look at the vision and goals, bring those back to the neighborhood, see if they still align, if there's any changes that need to be made. These are all what we've been covering in those meetings over the spring and summer with the neighborhood. Future land use plan we'll touch on, and then revitalization strategy. So target areas, which we'll touch on here, some neighborhood-wide strategies that are maybe things that can't be implemented with the funding we have, but are things that we can recommend the NIA start to take action on so that they can build a stronger foundation there. And then implementation, which will be really what we heavily touch on when we come back for action. A brief history of the neighborhood. So Historic Holiday Park was named after Cyrus K. Holiday, one of the founders of Topeka. Its original time of plat, it was on the outskirts of the city, and due to a plating error, there was a small triangular area that was left over that's now known as Holiday Park. So that was kind of what started the foundation of a neighborhood organization for this NIA now. Then we have some negative trends that kind of go on with the neighborhood. So starting in the 1900s through the 1920s, it was primarily a single-family neighborhood, but as the city began to grow, there was not enough housing that was being produced. A lot of the single-family homes became multi-family conversions. Then in the 1940s and 50s, we have kind of the opposite trend, where housing and land is available on the outskirts of the city, and people begin to move to the perimeter. 1966, we have the tornado, does not have a big impact on this neighborhood, but Central Park to the south was pretty devastated, and recovery from neighborhoods that were impacted have kind of spilled over into this neighborhood. And then in 1968 to 1970, there were additional single-family homes that were demolished for the expansion of new multi-family, and then commercial uses in the area. Blue Cross and Blue Shield has also expanded within this neighborhood. A lot of the single-family homes have been torn down, replaced with surface parking, or things that were originally schools are being used for office space now. And then some positives, there are two National Historic Districts that are listed within this neighborhood, and then in 2008, the Neighborhood Plan, which started laying a foundation for how to improve the neighborhood moving forward. What we see here is the 2020 health map for Historic Holiday Park. The information on the next slide is really going to cover what is north of 12th and then south of 12th, so the intensive care and the outpatient areas. So there are five indicators that go into our health map. Percent of persons below poverty, Part I crimes per 100 people. When we get to the crime map, we'll go into a little bit more detail of what those are. Average residential property values, single-family homeownership, and boarded and unsafe structures. All of those together produce the composite map, and it is not as clear to see here, but there are two green boxes surrounding percent of persons below poverty in the public safety portion. So something to call out there, as you also compare those to the composite score, we see that one of the block groups dropped. from at-risk to intensive care. And a lot of that is due to a very large jump in the percent of individuals below poverty. And the public safety, so the part one crimes jumped in that block group as well. So those are two of the biggest contributing factors why this health, health score dropped for that block group. Additionally, when you look at boarded and unsafe structures, just a point of clarification. So they currently have two, two per every 100 dwellings is how that's measured. And you see that there are four in three in 2000 and 2003. We reworked how we counted those properties, so that's why there's a change, and that is now intensive care. But previously, a higher number was at-risk, just to clarify that as well. So the next four slides are going to feature four different sets of maps. The consistent thing across this is the darker the area you see, those are generally worse conditions. And a little background on how these go together. So we go out and inventory all of the housing conditions exterior, from the exterior. We compile that information for each individual parcel and then apply that to a block score, so no one individual property is being called out. But the block scores help kind of give an idea of what we are looking at for the next series of maps. So we're, for all of them but one, we're going to have the 2008 map on the left side of the screen as well. So that way, you can kind of do a comparison to see how these have changed over time. But some quick facts on the housing conditions. Single-family, uh, single-family home values have remained fairly stagnant in this area. Since 2008, single-family homes have only gone up $6,600 in their appraised value. Current single-family homes make up only 28% of the total housing stock compared to 41% in 2008. And additionally, we found 834 total deficiencies in the neighborhood from that inventory. With that said, only 62% of them were considered minor. But eventually, those minor deficiencies stack up, and you begin to see how the homes are deteriorating there. Looking at owner occupancy. And one thing I want to call out on this is the legend. So there, there is a shift in the numbers. So they don't align perfectly. And I'm going to explain that at the top there, you see 59% as the high range. That is because from the 2020 census, Topeka had a owner occupancy level of 58.6%. So that was adjusted to reflect the city conditions. The thought there was that if you, you can suppress those numbers so that it paints a rosier picture than what is truly going on citywide. So this was viewed as a little bit more of an accurate portrayal versus the rest of the city as opposed to just internal to the neighborhood. At the time of the data being collected, 48% of all single-family properties were owner occupied. That represented a 6% drop from the 2008 plan. So there's been a reduction in single-family units and that reduction in owner occupancy. And to clarify on that, there are very few blocks that have a 41% or more owner occupancy. Those make up only six of the 17 residential blocks on this map. Part one crime. So these are, part one crimes are defined as murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, and theft. So these are the more serious crimes that the police department deals with. What we do here is we take the information from the Topeka Police Department, and they have it associated with an individual parcel. Again, we put those into a combined block, so that way, we are not highlighting individual areas where there is more crime. When you look at this map, there's a few pockets where there are the brighter reds or the darker reds. Those generally have either a larger multifamily property within that block, or it's a commercial property. So the darkest color there is the Walgreens at 10th and Topeka Boulevard. It has the highest number of reported thefts and burglaries there. So that is why that one stands out so much. When we brought this map to the neighborhood, they indicated that they did not think this was maybe a true picture. There were 65 part one crimes reported in 2022. We requested additional information from the Topeka Police Department to look at 2021, and there were 131 part one crimes. So double the number of crimes from year to year. So we have a map of, of information that we use. We did present what we found back to the neighborhood. How you reflect that is, is maybe a little bit more of a challenge because it's going to be something that evolves year over year. But we did look into what they said and could confirm that there are blocks that have more significant crime on a year-to-year basis. But those, that jump was also kind of associated with some of those blocks. It wasn't blocks that really started to stand out that weren't highlighted here. Infrastructure conditions. We did not have an infrastructure conditions map in the 2008 plan. What goes into this is the pavement scores, sidewalk, and curb and gutter. So there are three factors that go into how this map is made. Some other considerations, and we'll touch on this on the next slide, but there's a lot of historic infrastructure in this neighborhood. So stone curb and gutters, brick sidewalks. A lot of the streets actually have brick underneath the pavement itself as well. With that said, the 12th Street Project's now been completed, so there have been some infrastructure projects. Huntoon Project is also in the CIP as well. So there are two major projects that cut through this neighborhood, one being complete and one that's on the horizon for the neighborhood. So some of those key issues. What this map here is showing you, where there's kind of that white green color, those are the streets that have underlying brick. So one of the issues that we're working through with the neighborhood is they are really invested in keeping or preserving the brick. So there are limitations there. If you do a mill and overlay, you have to be very careful to ensure that the top of the brick is not removed because that destroys the integrity, and it cannot just be rehabilitated with the brick that's there. There are some similar issues with the stone curb and the brick sidewalks, specifically brick sidewalks being the responsibility of the property owner and the maintenance and upkeep and keeping those ADA compliant as well. So those are some of the concerns we're working through as far as infrastructure. And in general, with the historic infrastructure, we have the two historic districts. So that's something else we're working through. Are there certain areas we really want to focus on preserving historic infrastructure? Or is this something they are not as interested in? Again, brick streets, they are. That's just very costly to turn some of these streets back into brick. Goals of the plan. So the top goal is engage in the community to generate the buy-in for the plan. We want, the reason we have so many meetings with the neighborhood is we don't want this to feel like something that we create and they have no investment in. We want this to be a plan that they stand behind and it's something that they're proud of and they can use moving forward. Improve and stabilize the housing conditions. We're going to touch on the target areas. But we want the neighborhood to think not just about infrastructure, although that's a larger pool of money. We do have the 330,000 rehabilitation funds. So when they go to select target areas, we want them to think about the housing conditions as well. Address and layout infrastructure projects. So with, when Dreams changed from SORT, there is now a second pool of funds, Dreams Two. So a neighborhood plan happens every other year. And that every second year, that's a competitive application process. So if they have projects laid out that are unfunded now, they can apply for Dreams Two and pursue those. So the goal is to not just lay out plans for this money, but give them a roadmap for how to spend money in the future as well. Relating to neighborhood health, reducing the number of boarded and unsafe structures. We have the voluntary demolition program, so there's an educational piece to this. Boarded and unsafe structures was an intensive care factor for the Neighborhood Health Map. So if you get some voluntary demolition, reduce those numbers, that helps the Neighborhood Health Score as well. And then increasing single family, family homeownership. We're going to look at a future land use map. We are not making any changes or proposing any changes to the future land use map. But the overall goal is to increase the single-family homeownership by talking to them about how some of the conversions, how they can help stabilize. There can still be owner-occupied conversions and taking some pride in the neighborhood as well. Future land use. As I stated, there were no proposed changes to the future land use map from the 2008 plan. And then target areas. There are a lot of different colors on this map. The next map will be a little bit more clear. When we look at, so what we have here is our composite map. We take the housing, crime, infrastructure, and owner occupancy. And similar to our health map, we lay all of those on top of each other with a score to kind of get an idea of the overall health of a block and not just have to look at each individual housing, infrastructure, et cetera. So what you have here is a composite map. Same with the others. The darker the color, the worse the overall conditions of the block scores. And then we kind of draw up some target areas. Target areas are typically three to five block areas that we would like to have the most focused investment, with the idea being you invest that money in a smaller location, you can have more of an impact than spreading it across the whole neighborhood, and you can produce this blooming effect where it starts to spill over to adjacent blocks. There's additionally anchors and strengths. Anchors are kind of the long-term tenants of the neighborhood that are a positive. So there's the park, there's some churches, there's the Devon Flats building in there. And then you have kind of the strength blocks. Those are the ones that are performing well. A lot of the strength blocks here are associated with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. They do a really good job of maintaining everything. And the neighborhood actually spoke really highly of valuing them in the neighborhood and had concerns if something were to happen if they moved on from the neighborhood, which is a little bit of a tone shift from the 2008 plan where there were parking lots expanding into the neighborhood. So we take this information, we draw up the target areas, and we bring them to the neighborhood to have them vote. That was our last meeting we had with the neighborhood. What we have here was how they voted to select the neighborhoods, or the target areas. So kind of the northwest, we have target area one. You have an area of most need with some blocks that were viewed as average. That's a fairly good way to tie these together. You don't want to just focus on areas that are all most need or in need. The money just won't go far enough, especially the housing dollar. So you have some good blocks in there to help kind of stabilize that area. And then the second area they selected was actually on the south side of the neighborhood. They viewed this as kind of a buffer space between themselves and what they viewed as issues that were happening in the neighborhood to the south. And they thought that if they could help stabilize this area, it would help protect all of the blocks, and they would not have increasing concerns creeping into the neighborhood. And that could even flow the opposite direction into Central Park and kind of help stabilize some of their northern blocks as well. So when we get into the implementation part, when we come back, one and two will be primarily where you see the majority of projects. If there's, for some reason, not enough projects in those areas, we'll get into three and then four. So the next steps. Once we have the projects in line and we work with the neighbor, the final group to get those projects selected, the draft plan will be published. We'll receive public comment on that. We will have a final neighborhood meeting where we present an expanded version of what's been presented here. And then, like we stated, like I stated earlier, we will come back to Planning Commission, October, maybe November, and then city council as well. And that is all I have. I would take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, Bryson, could you identify what the historic districts are? You said there's two.
Yes, I apologize. I should have included those. One of them is relatively large and fairly expansive. Is there any way to get the presentation back on the screen? Thank you. I'm not going to be able to tell you the exact boundaries of the second one, is it's relatively large. The first one is off of Fillmore. And let me find one that we have streets. So Northwest Corner, Fillmore, between, it's kind of the half, half-block north of Munson. There are, I believe, it's six properties that together form one of the historic districts. The other one is more or less centralized around the park. And it continues up from there. And it is not a perfectly rectangular. There's a few parts that jut out. But for the most part, I believe Fillmore or the half-block east of Fillmore is generally the boundary. And then the half-block east of Taylor is the general boundary, with Huntoon kind of being the southern boundary and working its way up western. And it does not grab that office residential, future land use designation. But if, if, that's something I can provide the actual.
Oh, I just wasn't, I couldn't recall the second district in that area. So, thank you.
That is my fault.
I should have a, just curiosity. You mentioned the brick underlying streets. So that means they currently have asphalt on top?
Correct.
And is it possible to take the asphalt off and reuse the brick?
We're kind of working through what that might look like. There are ways. It's very cost prohibitive. Initial estimates were that it would probably be above what the budget for this project would be. We're trying to confirm that and see if it would be possible. And if not, actually get a more true estimate so it's something that we could include in the plan and then say, with all of these segments you're interested in, here's a more realistic picture of the amount of money you need, and then go from there. Because currently, there's a lot of potholes where you can see the exposed brick. And the neighborhood has kind of voiced their opinion that fixing the potholes, they're like, well, we, new ones either just pop up or we see where these reopen.
Go ahead.
Whenever it comes to the cost of that, is that in just initially removing the pavement? Or is that also in maintaining a brick street?
That would just be getting it to a new brick street. That does not include any maintenance as well, which I think is part of the concern from a public, public works perspective of the longevity of that road.
Would you expect the maintenance of a brick street to be comparable to pavement or?
I actually do not have an answer for that, but I can find that out.
All right, thank you.
I've always been curious about that, too, that some of the brick streets seems like they've been around a long time.
Couple hundred, yeah. Is there currently a sidewalk project already going on in this neighborhood?
Correct. Through the city's sidewalk infill project. So it's not directly associated with Dreams, but we kind of brought that into our planning process. There was $330,000 that were spent to remove some existing sidewalk that was in poor condition and replace it with concrete.
Hey, Bryson. I, I understand that homeownership and rental is a, is a factor that probably should be taken into account, although I think it gets more emphasis than it probably deserves in most communities. But I, I'd be interested to see how you present that point in the report. I'm just concerned that if, if, it's one thing to emphasize some positives about owner-occupied structures, I guess, but I've seen too often where it's rentals are just cast, just, you know, broad brush of being bad and disparaging rental properties. And some folks will then take that and run with it, and you disparage the people who live in the rental properties. And I think that's harmful to the community. So I, I don't, I don't have any words for you. But when we see the report, I just, I'm hoping that you could present that in a way that, that doesn't feed that negative feeling that gets expressed towards, and again, going back to the property on Eugene and Paramore, where brand-new duplexes and fourplexes. But the concern from some folks was, I believe, I believe from the public hearings, the public comments were made that there were concerns about the, the renters. That was as much as important as the fact that they were rental properties. And that's, again, I think that's very unfortunate. again, I think that's very unfortunate. So let me ask you this question. If I, if I'm in the area, and I have a duplex, and I live in the duplex, and I rent out the other side, how is my property, how does that enter the calculation for the percentage of rental versus own homeownership?
So, I did the separate calculation on that, because there are, I believe it was 8% of the multifamily, not 8%, there was a portion of the multifamily conversions that were owner-occupied. So the overall level of owner occupancy did jump up to around 50% when you included those. It's still, I believe, less than 20% of all of the multifamily conversion properties. But there was a segment of that type of housing that did have owner-occupancy. And working with that planning committee, I would say there are quite a few of them who do not view rentals as a negative. A lot of them understand that some of these homes are very, very large, and that some of them that are now conversions, it was necessary. When you have a seven-bedroom house, there wasn't any way to fill some of that space, and so rentals are not necessarily a bad thing in their mind. And there are some homes that you might assume were single-family until you realize there's multiple mailboxes in this neighborhood. There are some really nice conversions as well. So, if I did paint that as a negative, that was not my intention, and I appreciate-
Well, I'm not jumping to conclusions. You are. I'm just saying, I want to see how it looks in the, in the, in the report that's submitted.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just have one other curiosity question. Do we know the characteristics of the landlords? Are they, are most of them in town, out of town, out of state? Has that been done? The analysis been done?
I have not done that. What I would say, just from what I recall from looking at that information, a lot of the conversions, and that's what the bulk of it is, is a lot of conversions. There are a few larger multifamily. Some of those are owned by someone out of state. But when I'm trying to drop off mailers and everything to make sure everybody has the opportunity to attend these meetings, a lot of those management companies were local. So, there's a mix there where they might be owned from out of state. The conversions, at least here, did not seem to be some, a name that I would recognize as someone who has a lot of properties for the most part when looking at those.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. That would move us on to communications to the commission.
Commissioners, I don't think we're trending towards an October meeting at this point. I don't think Holiday Park will be quite ready. We didn't get any submittals, which is a first for this year. And just, so if anybody's concerned about that, we were, we were way ahead of normal submittals for like the last five years this year, actually. So, we're, we're not behind by any means. There are some updates that we could provide on accessory dwelling units and possibly short-term rentals, but I think we can just wait and do that at November. Hopefully, we'll get a case, and we should have the neighborhood plan ready. So, I don't believe we'll have an October meeting.
Okay. Any other-
That's all I have.
Communications?
I guess the last thing that I would share is that, just for anybody who's out there listening that might be interested, we have a couple of open Planning Commissioner seats that are coming open after this meeting, right? I think we have three available. So, I would just encourage those that might be interested to go on to the City of Topeka website under Boards and Commissions, and you can apply online and express your interest. And all of those go directly to the mayor's office, and then our recommendations and appointments are happening from there.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? And just another quick thank you, Matt. Have a good retirement. And we'll return.
I'll see you again on the other side of the road. Take it easy.